So just to provide a little context on the site conditions. The top one isn't really visible in there, but I have copies of the map that I've shared with the Commission for public, but the map on your left is the topography and the map on the right is your aerial, and so it is showing the proposed location of the accessory dwelling unit. It is in the R40 zone and there are no wetlands, aquifer protection, or FEMA plant name review required. Excellent. So in terms of the application, it complies with the dimensional requirements, it complies with the residential accessory buildings and uses requirements, and it complies with the accessory dwelling unit requirements. So I would just like to note that the secondary proposed living use of this structure is what's triggering that special exception review. If this were to be just a shed, which it isn't, it would require zoning in the building per max, but because there is a proposed living component to it, it has that higher threshold review as outlined in section 12, but in terms of your regulations, it is compliant on these sections. And then finally, for additional context, applicant, it estimates that three to six cubic yards will be reviewed. Level location of the accessory dwelling unit, the unit will be placed on a concrete slab, so we know basement or that nature. And then the applicant is proposing to cut down two trees. It's kind of difficult to see in the picture on the left, but you can see them in the one on the right. It shows where the white card is. Those are the two trees that are proposed to be removed for this application. And as you can see, based on the shed, they are on the applicant's, they're facing the interior of the applicant's yard. And that's what we have to orient. We can answer any questions if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, and that is a picture of the, the shed is on their property?
Shed is on their property.
Okay, and it will be, how far from the shed?
How far from what?
See, there's a shed back there already?
Um, yeah, from the shed, from, well, we didn't measure, but...
All right, are we ready for the owners to stand up and describe this thing?
You got, okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so, yeah, well, let's start with the applicant. You can actually come up here and speak from there, if it doesn't make you too nervous.
Yeah, because we hadn't actually looked at how far it needed to be from the shed, but we do have some flexibility as to how far over we need to do it, because if you go back to the pictures where the trees are, you'll see that there's space to the left of that tree that's on the left, so we can go over. So it could be 30 feet, 35 feet.
To the left, so it'd be further behind the house.
Uh, yeah, it'd be less visible from the road, I guess is the way to put it, away from the shed.
Sir, could you, I didn't find your property.
Yeah, sorry, I'm Larry Atherton, the one who owns the property.
Okay, um, how will the shed be oriented? You had the picture of it, but it's not a shed, is it?
Well, it's, uh, we're basically going to, we're proposing to use a shed and then convert it.
So the, which?
So that's act, I think the way that...
The gable out and gotta face the, the road, or the?
So, so it's gonna be like long ways.
Yeah, okay.
It looks more like it's going like this, but it's gonna be more like this, and the door to it will face into the, the yard. So this is basically where the front door would be, and this is not gonna be a garage, it's gonna be a wall there.
Okay.
There'll be a lot of things that changes. So, yeah, so we can face in that thing.
And then you're gonna be running like electrical and plumbing and whatnot?
Yeah, we're gonna be running it from my house. Uh, there's a leach field, sorry, if you go back to the, to the picture, that's around, about in here, there's a leach field we want to hook it up to, and then electricity and water will come from my house, so it won't have to come from the, from the road.
I take it that you're keeping the shed where it is?
Yes, leaving the shed.
And then, I'm sorry, just with regard to the electrical and the plumbing, is that gonna be like buried, or is that gonna be above ground, or how are you gonna run the lines?
I assume for the water, it would be buried.
Yeah.
For the electrical, uh, it could be buried, or I, I would kind of, kind of defer to what that would be the best practice.
Yeah.
So we're getting electricity from the house over there.
I'm just curious from an excavation standpoint, that's all.
Yeah, the estimation was a little kind of tricky for me to estimate, because as you can see, it's already flat.
Yeah.
So it's just kind of making sure that we can put in a concrete slab, because I know that for a lot of, like, some of these sheds, they say gravel is fine, but since we have plumbing, we can't have that just come up out of the ground, so we want to have that concrete slab, but it's basically gonna be right in here, and it's already flat. So it was hard for me to estimate how much was actually gonna be taken out to put that slab in.
Your application came with this drawing of the property, and it came with this picture of the shed, but what I could see from this picture, I mean, I heard what you said, that the, the image that you're showing us isn't the building that you're planning to build.
That's, this is what we are planning, that's an old one. So originally what we were doing is we were looking at, um, yeah, so that's originally what we were looking at, but then I had been talking to someone about other options, and they said, take a look at some of these sheds, because they, we were, when we went to Futter Farms and saw some there, because people were talking about how they were converting, like during COVID, we're converting a lot of these sheds to, um, kind of like offices and whatnot. So, yeah, that is an older picture of what we originally were thinking. The one that's up here now is what we're actually...
We also got this.
Okay, thank you.
As a drawing of your property.
Yes.
And it doesn't have an existing shed on it. Could you tell us where that shed is, that is in the picture?
The shed?
Yeah, there.
It's in the backyard, it would be...
The existing shed.
Somewhere, oh, sorry, right up here.
I'll be the test of that, I wasn't really mistaken when I bought it.
How large is that shed, give or take?
That shed, maybe four by twelve?
Okay.
Yeah, four by twelve, pretty small.
Got it, thank you.
Any more presentation?
No, I, I mean, I pretty much was just here to answer questions, I wasn't too sure exactly what...
Do you wish to have any other questions?
My questions were answered.
Okay, all right, anybody from the public like to speak?
Sure.
Wow, lots of people. He was first.
I'll say something first. I heard about this.
We need your name and your address first, Dave.
Name and address, yeah.
I'm on 7 Harvest Hill.
You didn't give us your name.
Richard Shaneberger, been there for 50 years now, and the, and the main thing I'm concerned about here is when I heard that it was gonna be another livable building on one property, when the area all contains one house, and that's where the people live, I got a little bit excited, because I don't know who's gonna live in that thing, and I would hate to see our area turned into other people in the area, building a shed like this and say, okay, it's a shed, but in fact, it's for people to live in, and then whoever is living in it now dies, moves away, you sell your house, next people come in, or the person who's gonna live in there, and then it's turned into an Airbnb. I'm against it for that reason. Okay, any questions? I don't know of any other one in our area that has a property with two livable buildings on one property. I'm against it. It's the beginning of opening the door for what we already have in this town and community, all this mass housing. I bought the property because I enjoyed the way it was, I don't want to see it expanded with houses where they are not, where there are livable houses and it isn't zoned for it. I don't know your total intention, but I'm sorry, that's my feeling.
Okay, next, all right, well, all right, we got him first. Again, your name and address, please.
I'm Richard Murphy, at 24 Watson Drive, which is around the corner from 20 Harvest Hill. And so as I was looking at this, I have a personal interest, because recently I've tried to look at my own home, which is a five-bedroom home, and try and figure out how I can live there for the next 30 years, and I'm getting along in age, and so I began to look at the question of putting in another bedroom, maybe downstairs, maybe converting a family room to a bedroom. And I was told by a number of contractors that that created a problem, because you see, when you have so many bedrooms and so many full bathrooms, which we would have, you run into issues with your septic system. And I've heard a little bit about how the electricity works in the leach field, but I haven't heard much about how it connects to the septic, septic tank. And if this facility was actually attached to the house, would there be actually different building requirements employed? For instance, would they have to have an enlarged septic system? Would they have to have a big, a bigger tank? Because I know in my home, when they built our homes in our neighborhood, depending upon how many bedrooms you had, you had a different kind of a septic tank. And so here you see somebody coming in a new bedroom in full bath, what I've gotta assume, and what are they avoiding in the way of additional building code issues that would occur if in fact that was attached to a house? So I am opposed to this, and for that reason, because I think this is just a way around some of the other issues that would arise if you were in fact adding a bedroom and a full bathroom to a house. And so that's my issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, name and address, please.
Cherrieside, Dade, Minnetesha, Massara. I lived in Simsbury since 1953. My father started working in Simsbury in 1930, so I'm almost like a Dada. I graduated from Simsbury High School from this building. The others have said what, a lot of what I was going to say.
Can we have your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Can we have your address?
I'm over at 23 Harvest Hill. When we purchased the land in 1977 to build up a, a home, we were purchasing the land in a single dwelling area, not two separate dwellings. And I've happily paid taxes all these years to live in that, the privilege of living in that neighborhood. And by that, I pay the highest taxes on the street to... Uh, I wouldn't have a problem if it were attached to the house, but I've spoken to real estate agents, and I said our property values are going to go down. When I went to the town hall, I also saw a very different sketch than what is presented here. I was also told two different times of the hearing, but when I went to that town hall, they said it was a very wooded block, so dwelling would not be visible, where anybody can come in, and if they want, they can cut down all the trees, and then we're going to see a house, we're going to see a shed, and we're going to see a detached dwelling. And we can buy the property for a detached dwelling. So, um, please consider our neighborhood and the feeling that it has there, and please don't spoil it on us. Thank you.
Okay, right in the back there. Name and address.
Yep, Jack Schmetterling at 28 Harvest Hill Road. I have some prepared statements, so pardon me for reading. So I'd like to thank the Town of Simsbury and Zoning Commission for providing an opportunity for open dialogue regarding issues pertaining to appropriate land use and development. Home to many of us who are 20 or 50 years or more. Again, I live 20 yards to the road, and I'm here to bring forth some concerns that I, as well as some other neighbors who are not present tonight, have. And most of my concerns have been documented in several letters that I have submitted, as well as several photographs, so you may have had some time to review that information in advance. My reading of the language used in section 12.1 outlining special exception application requirements indicates that a special exception shall not be granted until the zoning commission has determined that all of the following conditions and site plan requirements in compliance with the zoning regulations have been satisfied. There are six such requirements, and I do not see any discussion of these documented. What was presented tonight was the first I heard about some of that. Of these six conditions, I believe four are not in compliance and merit further consideration. One is orderly development. I do not believe the construction of the proposed structures in harmony with the development of our neighborhood, as discussed by some of our neighborhoods already. I believe it will be the first non-attached accessory structure designed for full-time living with full utilities. Could this trigger future requests for other such dwellings in our neighborhood? What happens after the current proposed occupant no longer lives there? Is there a zoning regulation to prevent the structure from becoming a rental unit? That would certainly disrupt the orderly development of this neighborhood. Number two is property values. The proposed structure will most definitely depreciate adjacent property values. Adjacent properties, especially those below and behind, such as the slide, currently have a lovely wooded buffer that serves many purposes, including preventing water runoff, as well as being part of a wildlife park. A new inhabited structure so close to our properties could add light and noise pollution and upset this gentle balance. Part of the charm of our properties is the wooded borders, and this will likely have a negative impact on property values, not to mention the negative impact of increased water runoff, which I will talk a little bit more about later, since that is a huge issue. Number three was public safety, and I could not come up with any issues regarding that, nor number four, traffic considerations, I don't believe. Number five, landscaping and buffers. Although it has been indicated that the proposed structure will conform to all setbacks, as I indicated above, this new structure would have a negative material impact on the wooded buffers that currently exist. Is any new landscaping plan that could protect whatever buffer is being lost? Has anyone from the town come down to understand what the sightlines are from our homes and how they could have a negative impact on surrounding properties? I also would like to clarify occasionally exactly where this accessory dwelling unit would be situated. There is some conflicting information on the documents posted on the town website. One indicates it will be 40 feet from the rear property line, whereas another document indicates it would be 51.22 feet from the rear property line. Number six, relationship to utility systems, drainage systems, and impact on community facilities. This regulation states that adequate provisions for stormwater drainage can be provided without adversely affecting neighboring properties. I do not believe we can be reassured with any degree of certainty that the proposed construction will not have a negative impact on water drainage. Has this been evaluated by town engineers or other appropriate professionals? Has there been a site visit? Has the topography of the land been taken into account? I did submit one photograph that gives a sense of the slope of land, uh, which may or may not be shown tonight. Is the commission aware that the ground in our area has a high clay content, and that clay absorbs very little water, further fostering runoff, which will come down toward our property? And that the addition of a structure with a roof will increase focused water runoff? Is the commission aware that the town already knows a potential flooding risk of what I affectionately call lower Harvest Hill Road, as evidenced by the drainage culvert in the front of our property installed many years ago? Photograph of this was submitted as well. Jessica and Krista Walmer, who live next to us on 30 Harvest Hill Road, have provided documentation, including photographs, of flooding they experienced several years ago, after the property owners of 20 Harvest Hill Road had their driveway redone, which certainly required less excavation and disruption to the ground than the proposed construction will entail. Ms. Valalbert indicated in one of her responses to me that it was estimated that three to six cubic yards will need to be removed, as well as two trees. The size of the two trees was not indicated, which could have a significant impact. I saw today that at least one of them is large enough that it could disrupt the root system that is helping to hold on to the water, preventing it from coming onto our property. All of this construction will certainly upset the tenuous water balance that currently exists. We also have concerns regarding the septic system, which will certainly add to groundwater. When I posed the question about the septic system, the response I received was the applicant plans to connect the proposed accessory dwelling unit to the primary residential structure, which we heard tonight. I assume that means attached to the current septic system, but how old is that system? I have no recollection of the septic system being replaced in the 30 years we have lived there. As has been evaluated, that the current septic system has the capacity to handle this increased burden. Generally, when septic systems are created, they are sized according to their current structure and inhabitants at the time. I suspect it was not built with the anticipation of a new structure being added. The need to upgrade the septic system would further burden the tenuous water balance of the clay soil, as previously noted. I hope the zoning commission gives serious consideration to these issues and other issues that have been raised today. It seems clear to me that at least four of the six conditions for granting a special exception has not been met. All of us long-term Simsbury residents love our town with deep passion, and we understand the need for balanced growth as we move into the future. But that growth should not occur in a residential neighborhood, which for years has been limited to single-family homes occupying roughly one acre lots. Although we are certainly supportive of providing a variety of housing opportunities for all segments of the population, as outlined in zoning ordinance 3.5.2, I do not believe that moving forward with this construction preserves the appearance, architecture, and general design of the neighborhood, also as outlined in section 3.5.2. Thank you for your time tonight, and to allow us to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Good name and address.
Yeah, my name is Kirk Stein, live at 12 Clearfield Road, which is around the corner, uh, two rounds from the same, 20 Harvest Hill Road location. I think we've heard a lot of strong technical issues about this proposal. I don't live close enough to it to be directly affected, but I have my properties directly affected, but I want to bring up just a couple of points. I mean, I'm old enough now that I've seen a lot of changes, changes in the way we do things, and not reflectively, it's reflexively against change. Seen a lot of positive changes, but when we talk about this potential for a, a livable dwelling, we know this opens the door to potentially use of Airbnb, which is obviously a huge thing going on over the last decade, and it's just expanding tremendously. It's been dealt with, I know in, you know, Simsbury's already addressed it with some, some existing regulation, but I would argue that in this case, I mean, basically, I object to the dwelling aspect of this, because I think our neighborhood is really kind of a, somewhat of a unique neighborhood, especially a neighborhood-y neighborhood. You don't find too many neighborhoods in which there's a lot of residential roads that are coherent to the neighborhood and separated a little bit from the main road. Makes it a very desirable place for families with, especially families with young children, because it's a quiet area, a very quiet, and, you know, a large neighborhood that's very quiet, and I like that aspect of it, and I think a lot of people do. I don't like the idea that we could gradually change, you know, affect that. We're not, you know, there are many residential units in Connecticut, predominantly that sit individually along a major road, but it's not like that. I mean, it's just a place where people want to live, because they will get to know the people around them, and know who's living around them. And I don't think, you know, I'm not really thinking that this is a, it may be a property value issue for the immediate neighbors, but I think what we've seen from the point of view of what Airbnb does is, once a neighborhood is, or once an area is open, that tends to bring in investors and investment properties, which in some cases drives up the value and makes, and it has contributed to the lack of affordability of housing. So my concern is about essentially changing the characteristic of our neighborhood, which I think is somewhat unique and, and a more desirable place to live, especially for families with children. So that's my objection to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is Krista Walmer, I'm at 30 Harvest Hill Road. I also have some prepared remarks, and my wife and I did submit by email some concerns and photographs. Um, excuse me, my approach is gonna be sort of similar to Jack Schmetterling's, in that I'm really looking at the technical aspects of this, but just to read my prepared remarks. My name is Krista Walmer. My wife and I own the property at 30 Harvest Hill Road, which abuts and is downhill from 20 Harvest Hill Road. We've lived there for 17 years, we have two children at Simsbury High School, and for them, 30 Harvest Hill is the only home they've ever had. When we, when we were moving to the area, we could have purchased a home in Avon or West Hartford, but we specifically chose Simsbury because of its small-town feel and less-developed landscape. And specifically, we chose Harvest Hill Road because, because we love the character of the neighborhood. Zoning regulations are critical to preserving this character. Simsbury zoning regulations and associated residential districts are well thought out, which would therefore be only with extreme caution and after thorough due diligence that the board ever approve a special exception to the zoning. If a special exception gets a rubber stamp approval, then there effectively are no zoning regulations. As citizens of Simsbury, we are counting on our elected officials to preserve the character of our neighborhoods and the value of the homes in which we live. So thank you for holding this public hearing, so that the affected homeowners can express their concerns. Regarding the application itself, section 12.1 requires that six conditions must be met in order for a special exception to be granted. These conditions have not been met for 20 Harvest Hill Road. Specifically, one, on orderly development, the construction of an apartment in the backyard of 20 Harvest Hill Road is not in harmony with the appropriate development of the neighborhood. If detached accessory dwellings were allowed in everyone's backyards, this will no longer be an R40 low-density residential zone. Number two, property values. The requirement is that, I'm quoting from the regulations here, the proposed use will not depreciate adjacent property values. Clearly, this special exception would reduce the value of my property. It increases density, noise, and weight. Being at a higher elevation than my home, the structure will be visually prominent and will likely be higher than my roof. The Harvest Hill is an extreme slope. So looking at the 20 Harvest Hill application in isolation, like you see on the, on the screen, it appears that this accessory building will be hidden nicely behind the home and be unnoticed. Considering the topography and the curve of Harvest Hill Road, however, it will be far from, hidden from the neighboring homeowners, and will undeniably reduce the value of their property. Number, third item, which is number five in the regulations, landscaping and buffers. The requirement is that, again, quote, "The proposed use will not result in a loss of any existing buffering between the subject site and adjacent single-family residentially zoned properties." My understanding, this is confirmed tonight, is that the applicant proposes to remove two trees, so it does not meet the requirement that there be no loss of any buffer. In addition, an accessory dwelling unit requires a dedicated parking space. The regulations, this is 3.5.2B1F, define a parking space as, quote, "Not less than nine feet by 18 feet." This parking space does not exist today, and removing trees to create it, or paving, driveway to create it, creates, to create it at the location specified there on the, on the application, would reduce the buffer between 20 Harvest Hill Road and 18 Harvest Hill Road. And the final is number six, drainage systems. Unfortunately, we don't have the pictures to show here, but you've seen them. As indicated in my emailed letter and the accompanying photographs, prior look at 20 Harvest Hill property resulted in extensive flooding in the yard after a rain. A serious concern for the addition of hard surfaces will cause additional flooding. Even small changes can have a major impact on drainage. Water has a mind of its own. So in summary, the proposed structure is not in harmony with the neighborhood, reduces adjacent property values, results in loss of existing buffer, and potentially creates stormwater drainage issues. In my opinion, it therefore does not meet the conditions for granting a special exception. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Jason Nucker speak. Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Jordan, and we own 25 Harvest Hill Road, and my wife, Mary Beth, and I, we've been there about 23 years, and we were there as a public hearing before, but here I am. I guess when I took a look at the application and I looked at the regulations, and I don't want to repeat everything that my neighbor said, but I would just say briefly that I concur with almost everything he said. I would reiterate a couple of things. First of all, I think the purpose of zoning is really to comport with people's expectations for how property will be used now and in the future. And I think that adding an additional accessory dwelling unit that's not attached, does not comport with how this neighborhood has grown and developed very nicely. I did want to say that I think that there was, there were the six elements that people mentioned that have to be satisfied in order for an exception to be granted, and I think that the four that people cited, I would agree with, are not met. I think zoning is not only something that people count on, it's something that, you know, people's expectations are such that they expect that a neighborhood that they have lived in a long time is not going to change dramatically, I guess. And I think that because of the way regulation is written, once the dwelling unit is built, not only could it possibly be used as Airbnb, but just as a rental unit to unrelated people. I will say, I don't have any serious objection if there were a extra dwelling unit attached to the home, it's really only occupiable by, you know, a relative, because I think we have to accommodate that in our society today. But I think there's some of the same concerns would be there about landscaping and drainage and what have you, but I think it would be ameliorated somewhat if it was attached to the home itself. I do think that because the, I couldn't find any evidence in the record that the four things cited by Jack Schmetterling and others were satisfied that you should consider, the record doesn't really support granting the exception based on what's in evidence. That's all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I've listened to all of this.
Can you come up here and give me your name and number, name and address, too?
I thought the least I could prepare. I'm just, I'm here as an interested participant, and I do happen to live next door, however, at 18 Harvest Hill. And my husband and I are new here for the last three years, and coincidentally, we actually have an in-law apartment. It's in the back of our property, and--
So sorry, could you state your name? They're trying to get it for the record.
I'm sorry. Katie Williams at 18 Harvest Hill. Excuse me, what number is that? Eighteen. Close by. But the question I have, and I agree with most of what's been said here completely, but I'm just wondering, in Larry's sort of envisioning this project, why he did not entertain the idea of doing an attached dwelling? Makes life pretty simple, really. I think there's probably not zoning regulations that prohibit that, are there?
There are.
Oh, there are. How come I have, I violate--
Well, you just let us know, we'll let the--
George tomorrow?
We have you on tape. No, actually, it depends on, the kitchen makes a big difference, having--
She doesn't really live at 18.
Just for the record, an attached unit doesn't require a special exception process.
Right, right.
Requires review.
Yeah.
So more specifically, there's no hearing if it's inside or attached to the house?
But you're still supposed to notify.
There's still a process--
Still need to notify the town.
The public hearing.
Next.
I'd like to say something.
Come back up, because you're on TV as well, so they can see you right over there. Millions are watching.
We are talking about has an underneath garage that could very easily be turned into, as it's called, an in-law apartment instead of building a separate outbuilding and then put in an attached garage.
Okay, thank you. This is actually the smallest ADU I've ever heard of.
Yeah.
You know, because people were saying, our old regs used to say 800 square feet, and they said that was too small. So you're being very small, and--
This is under 300.
This is a tiny, tiny house.
Plus, you know--
Yeah, yeah, the reg doesn't require it be attached. Anyone else? Yes, you gotta come back up.
I know, and a lot of comments. My name's Michael Fallon, I live at 32 Harvest Hill Road, just kind of in the behind of the property that we're talking about today. And again, to me, it's, for all of the reasons already said, you have zoning because you want to have a common purpose, have a common look, have a common, you know, business and residence in a neighborhood, and that's really what makes it retain and hold its value. I think it's just a fairness issue to me that either you should change the zoning regulations to allow this, with the rules, and everyone could do that, or it shouldn't be specially granted. And that's really all I wanted to add. To me, I just have had a lot of our neighbors have recently clear-cut their yards, and it's just changed the entire look of the privacy and the light and what you see at night out. And I moved there originally because you could go in the backyard and literally couldn't see another house when we moved in, and it's no longer the case. So anyway, people have been much more citing the citations as to why this isn't, but that's just my feeling, it's just not fair. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Just so you know, there was actually a state law that was going to allow these as of right, so everyone could do this. Simsbury chose to adopt a regulation that did give us the special exception process, so we are more restrictive than the state would allow, than the state would allow.
Again--
No, the state's trying to encourage ADUs everywhere, that every neighborhood could, every property could have an ADU in it, in the state of Connecticut. You gotta come back up.
I hear it's a state law, and I understand that. Richard Murphy, 24 Watson Drive. I hear it's a state law, and I understand the special exception, and I've read the material, and I can understand the difficulty of complying. One of the things that would make sense to me is that the special exception would require that the building itself comply with the building codes as if it was attached to the building. So one of the, one of the exceptions should be just a way around the current building code, and that's what we have here. It looks like it's an exception to get around the building code. And so I don't understand how you can not suggest that this is an inappropriate use, given that it is just a way to get around the building code.
Okay, the property will still have to comply with all the building requirements, so it's not a way to get around the law, just to clarify that for everybody.
Will that, does that mean it will have to comply with the septic system size?
Yes, yes.
And the other issues that will have to be--
Everything, it's the same as if it was attached.
Under Farmington Valley Health's regulation.
Yeah, this doesn't change any of the regs. Anybody else? Okay.
I'm gonna ask the applicant if they have any rebuttal, because of so many comments.
The applicant?
You have to come back up.
Does it have to? I will come back up.
Maybe you could answer some of the concerns about why you chose to do--
Yeah, I can, I can.
You don't have to.
I can't address every single point, observation and whatnot, because this is like the first. I appreciate everyone, you know, kind of taking the time and coming and bringing forth like all these observations, questions, feedback, and all of that. Can't address all of them standing up here, it's the first I'm hearing it, so obviously, I don't know if we have an opportunity to respond in writing, or--
You could.
Okay.
Because actually, you are on the agenda for a vote tonight, but you could ask if you want to consider some of the stuff, you could delay it.
You could ask for a continuance of--
You could ask a continuance.
I'll think about that. The vote's in a little bit, right?
Right after your--
So yeah, in a little bit.
I should just ask for it, the continuous for the vote piece. But I just want to say, you know, we looked at kind of building out this ADU, it's for my father, and I admit, I'm not really looking out beyond that. Right now, my father is living in Avon in a condo, and we were just looking for a place for him, kind of move in, save some money, you know, before the money runs out, just to have a place for him. We didn't think attached because we were thinking more of his independence. So I assure you, I am not, I promise you, I'm not trying to get around anything about not doing an add-on, just doing this ADU. It was just more of, he wants his independence, he wants to have his own place back there. You know, I can talk to sort of, I know there was a question about the parking space. There is actually a spot, there's already a parking spot that's there. There, it's not a paved area, but it's like a little dirt area that my dad, when he comes over, he parks there all the time.
He's there all the time, you're kidding me, Dad?
Yes, yeah, so it's like I'm separated, you know, from my wife, and so I have my boys 50% of the time, and my dad helps out, I'm watching them, and my mom comes up as well. But that was really kind of the full intent of this. So I just want to share that with you to kind of help you understand where I was coming from, and not that I was trying to kind of build out an Airbnb, I'm not looking to do that at all. You know, not looking to bring a lot more kind of congestion, because right now, my dad's pretty much there almost all the time anyway. So at least wanted to just say that.
You know, I asked--
Well, you have to come back up. You can't have a dialogue, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Actually, I have a question for you, though. There's no plan for any paving of a sidewalk or anything just here, so you're going to, for, in the wintertime when there's snow on the ground, you're going to just plow through the lawn?
We were gonna put like just, I have slate, just slabs--
Okay, because that wasn't shown on the thing.
Pavers, yeah, they kind of go, yeah, so you can't see that, but they just go back around to the, the back kind of deck area, and I was just gonna reroute it, and then just, yeah, just run the snow blower kind of over that to get down to it.
Okay. You can come back up if you would like.
I have a question.
Another question there.
So I just want to make sure that I've got the picture here. You understand that our regulations call for a solid surface in that parking place, and your intention is to not do that?
Sorry?
Our regulations call for a proper, solid surface in that parking spot for the ADU. Did you know that? And what are you gonna do about it?
Sorry, when you're saying parking spot, I thought we were talking about for vehicles, but if you're talking about for the ADU itself, we're going to put a concrete slab--
No, no.
I think you were talking about where your dad's parked.
The gravel counts.
Yeah. Because if you look--
And the gravel space is a solid surface?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is just this off here, there's a gravel, that's all gravel there, where people, when they come to visit me, they park there.
Got it.
Any other questions for the applicant while he's up here?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yep, you can come back up. While we're still open as a public hearing, you can still--
So the seniors have been about to answer the question. They gotta come back to answer.
Maybe.
I just was wondering, I don't know the age--
You have to address us with your questions.
I'm sorry.
You didn't need to address us, you can't have a dialogue with the applicant, no.
Okay. I was wondering what was, would happen if his father, if and when his father dies, or what is he going to do with the structure? And what if he sells? Then what's going to happen to the structure? Is somebody coming in, you know? As I say, I've just been there too long to see our neighborhood become like a tent city.
Okay, well, he doesn't necessarily have to answer that, but once this is approved, it goes with the property. So if someone, if you bought it afterwards, you could do with it as you please.
You could do, it could be an Airbnb.
Could be, could be a rental.
Well, we have--
Very tiny.
We have regulations on Airbnbs. The Board of Selectmen created a code and ordinance around Airbnbs within the last 12 months. It's already covered.
I'm sorry, at my age, I can't, I graduated--
Yeah, there is a town ordinance that covers the licensing of Airbnbs. There's an ordinance in the town.
They're already regulated.
So if you want--
It's had trouble.
Well, in light of that, they passed an ordinance, so you have to come get licensed from the, from the Board of Selectmen to, to run an Airbnb.
Yeah, it's not a zoning matter.
Yeah, but that could be, things could change with that, too, and I could easily get a license, yeah, to do it.
Right, but if there's any issues, you can have your license removed.
Yeah.
You have to come back up.
Oh, no.
We haven't had this much fun in a long time.
Bill Jordan from 25 Harvest Hill Road. You guys have just read the regulations, but when I read it, it seemed like once this is approved, people are talking about Airbnb, but it seemed like, when I read the regulations, it seemed like going forward, either the main dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit had to be occupied by the owner, but either one could be, and the other one theoretically could be rented long-term or meet the Airbnb regulations.
This is true. Yeah, one of them has to be occupied by the owner.
That's the Airbnb ordinance. It would have to be applied for, as Kevin has said, and it would have to be granted a license.
Jackie, it's also in the ADU regulations.
If it's an Airbnb, but it could just be rented for a year to somebody, not qualify as Airbnb--
A long-term rental, yes. It could be.
As long as the owner is living in the other unit. So the owner could live in the 288-square-foot thing and run out the house.
And so part of my issue, I guess, is with the regulation itself, I guess I confess, because, once again, going back to the change of character of the area, as far as I know, I don't know of any other separate dwelling unit, accessory dwelling units that have been made or not in our whole area, so this could be sort of the beginning of that, I guess. And I know that, on the one hand, people are trying to provide for, whether it's parents, grandparents, kids, to be able to live in places, but the way that regulations, the way the state, I guess, is pushing it, it's not just for relatives, it's for whoever in the future.
You're right.
And so I think that, you know, granting the exceptions then sparingly is, you know, especially when people can't comply some other way, is the way to go, as opposed to just, you know, saying yes to everybody who happens to meet the basic requirements. Although I did say, and I repeat other people, I don't think that the four requirements of the six have been met. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. You coming back?
Yeah. Seems like a nice, nice place.
So Jack Schmetterling, 28 Harvest Hill Road. I'm just curious, when you mentioned the upcoming vote, so I'm wondering what the process is. This is the commission, we're trying to bring up enough questions to see if this can move forward. Is your vote a yes or a no, or is your possibility that enough information has been brought to our attention that it needs further review?
We could defer it.
Yep.
Or we could vote yes or no tonight.
Okay.
That's done. Next item on the agenda.
Richard Changberger, 7 Harvest Hill Road. Longtime resident. I'm glad I kicked this off, but this is probably a stupid question, but we talk about the owner having to live there, could the owner or this property ever be divided? Could he sell the thing and say this is, he gets a deed for the place and he keeps his house? Is that possible?
I don't know exactly all the property there, but it's still R40, so you still have a minimum lot size, so I'm guessing probably not.
What is R40? I'm a little naive, I didn't study like some of these guys, but are we not zoning here?
It's approximately.
Yeah, it's a builder's acre, it's 40,000 square--
In other words, it couldn't be sold, right?
Most likely not.
That's you guys--
Subdivided, is what you said.
Is that possible?
Most likely not.
He could petition to the subdivision.
But the subdivision requirements call for, the result has to be two fully compliant lots. We can't have one tiny one and--
Yes. Yeah, so I don't think he has enough to subdivide it.
If they don't, they do not see the variance.
All right, we can't do a dialogue here.
Well, I have, I have a lot of sympathy for you. Your name was, again?
Larry Atherton. I go by Andy, my middle name, but Larry--
Okay. Well, wait till you go and buy 7 Harvest Hill.
I will.
But I do have sympathy, I do have sympathy, like some of the others have expressed, but I'm really concerned about what we're turning the area into, as has been already expressed. It's not just your concern, it's the concern for the whole neighborhood, what happens after you.
Okay, well, again, you're not allowed to have a dialogue with the applicant. It's gotta be with us. So we're glad, we'll come way and way to you as well.
Thank you.
Bill Jordan, 25 Harvest Hill Road. The last thing I wanted to make is, I thought if they tried to subdivide it and they don't meet the regulations, they could always apply for a variance to, you know, get it done.
Yeah, but that, zoning requires an acre, so that's not gonna happen.
I thought it could be done.
Yeah, we're not the zoning Board of Appeals.
That's actually, it would go through planning, does subdivisions. And you still have to meet your underlying zoning requirement, and I don't think the lot's big enough. I don't have all the data, but I doubt it.
In this case, maybe it's more difficult, but in other cases, if people applied for it, they, you know, if they said they met everything but one requirement, they could apply for a variance and say, yeah, we'll grant you that. Is that not true?
That's, that would not be under our purview, but I don't think that this would qualify for subdivision. Any of your properties, I don't think any of your properties would...
I'm not saying that it does at present, but, yeah.
At the risk of, we are the zoning commission and not the zoning Board of Appeals.
I understand.
But the fundamental premise of the zoning Board of Appeals is to remedy hardship situations. There has to be a hardship underlying the request for the variance. I'm not a creative person. I don't know what you might say in cases of...
People come up with arguments to get variance, or sometimes they're granted, sometimes they're not, it's a discretionary thing, but it just seems like it's left to a future point where someone has a discretionary decision.
That would be planning. Planning would do a subdivision. Okay. Have we beat this to death?
Almost. At least as a new person, right?
It is, it is. We're welcome while you're...
Sorry about that.
You just gotta do your name and...
Yep, my name's Sally Pellon, and I live at 32 Harvest Hill Road. My husband, Michael spoke already. My question is, when you said, you mentioned that the planning people are the ones that are in charge of the R40 designation, yes?
Well, we actually, we actually set the zone, but they do subdivisions.
Well, the reason I was asking is, I just was wondering, who has the broad purview over deciding, like, do you guys drive around the neighborhoods that are there deciding to see this sort of proposal when you're trying to do a variance? How do you, I know there was a site staff...
It's not variance, it's within our regulations, it's a special exception, but yes, we do generally drive by, so we get an idea of the property.
I just wondered who had the, because Simsbury's got a lot of different communities and neighborhoods.
The individual, you know, I don't know that everyone did, but...
I know where all of you guys live.
Perfect.
We wait for you.
We do now, because we all had to say it.
Right, right.
Even before then. Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're a very friendly group. It's been fun. Well, I take that back.
It's all friendly. I know it's kind of like the Mets are playing. Again, I don't know the process, so if it does get voted in the affirmative, what is the process? Does that then go to the zoning Board of Appeals?
Nope, it's done. If we vote affirmatively, it would be done.
So how do I have any reassurance that the issue, that you have the time, meaning that we took an hour of your time writing, to deliberate on these issues that we've brought forth?
We'll go down through the requirements for a special exception and decide one by one whether we feel they meet it.
I just want to stress again the issue of water. Nobody can really predict what happens to water, and I'm sure Mr. Atherton is not aware of water issues that those of us on lower Harvest Hill Road have had to endure over the past 20 to 30 years. To me, that's, because I live immediately downstream, that's my biggest concern. And I've seen too many other properties have improvements across the street or even a block away with assurances that there's gonna be no water problem, and quite often there is. And once, you know, you vote off on it and your hands are washed with it, we have no recourse. So I'd like you to take that into account.
Okay. Thank you. So are we done?
Does the applicant want to come back up?
Just, do you want us to continue and sound the vote?
Yeah, Mr. Applicant, are you, do you want to reconsider this? Do you want to delay in this, or you want to go ahead tonight? Now, no pressure.
Sorry.
No pressure.
I'd like to push it out.
We can take a motion to table this until our next meeting, which is...
I would recommend, I would recommend you continue the public hearing.
Okay, keep the public hearing open.
Third regular meeting.
Okay. Can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
To continue the public hearing until our October 3 meeting.
At 7:00 p.m.
At 7:00 p.m. Back here, in case you want to come back, you all want to come back?
Second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.
Just another moment, Kevin, I can't resist. We spent a lot of time, believe me, we spent a lot of time discussing the ADU regulations. We made changes in this regulation just a few weeks ago, after multiple public hearings. I'm not sure why we didn't see any of you there. We had, the attendance was so modest that we continued at our discretion to leave the thing open, so hopefully others would have time. There was a standard process for publicizing the event and our deliberation process. We changed this. And I'm not suggesting you'd love it if you had taken the time to read it before tonight, some have, but you could have input while we're actually working on the regulations. Our process, we're committed to the regulations that we have to work with, not what we'd like, what we'd like in the future, what we don't like. We're committed to the regulations, that's it. And so we can't apply new thoughts at this point. We're, you know, you might pursue a process to get the regulations modified. I'm not suggesting that, nor am I suggesting that you don't do that. You're citizens, you're entitled to pursue the people that you've elected with your position at any time, but we spent a lot of time on this, and it's unfortunate for everybody to a certain degree that, you know, there wasn't more participation, more input from residents. I'm not suggesting I know exactly what the differences would have been, but again, we have not clearly stated that accessory dwelling units attached and detached have been permitted in Simsbury for decades. And now, there's one near you, and here we are.
Can I make a comment about that? I'll come up, I'll come up.
The rest are gonna have to come back for the next hearing, because...
Sally Pellon, 32 Harvest Hill Road. I like to think I'm pretty informed as far as following the things in the town, I've been more involved in the schools and other things, but to your point, my husband and I didn't realize the shed regulations had changed. I talked to Savannah about it in July, in March, until we went looking up, when our neighbor on the other side was gonna put a shed in, it used to be 50 feet, was what we'd always heard, and then they changed to 10 feet. So we didn't, we weren't, not an ADU, just a, just a regular non-living-in shed. So as longtime residents, we really have tried to keep up on these things, and we were both completely taken by surprise that these new regulations were on the website when we were looking in March, you know, this year is when they were brought to our attentions, in July. So I do think, I don't know what the process is of publicizing, but I do think there are people that might care more if we understood. I had to find out about this meeting from a neighbor. I didn't see anything about it, the sign in the neighbor's yard was up yesterday, I think, but I...
I suspect you might be mistaken, but...
Okay, yeah, no, it's been there. All right, let's, we gotta move along.
Yep.
We got our other things to make.
Thank you.
I know, we've continued already. Old business, we don't have any new business. Application 2225, we'll delay that one at the applicant's request. So we're at application 2226 of Willow Arms Mutual Housing Association, owner Susan Odell. You can wait a few minutes for the crowd to...
Let me just step out for a moment, Kevin. You can go ahead, I'll be right there.
You're fine.
Can you close this door, sir?
My goodness. I'm glad he said that, you did very well with that.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Stan doesn't have any introductory comments, because the applicant has got a...
An attorney?
Very nice, very nice, very nice presentation, and I'll let them walk.
Okay, and if you would also give your name and address. I guess you didn't get that part.
Well, I don't live on Harvest Hill Road.
What's your name?
I am Susan Odell, Senior Associate at Paul Bailey Architects in New Haven, Connecticut, 110 Audubon Street in New Haven, Connecticut. I'm here tonight representing the owner of Mutual Housing Corporation. So jumping right in, Willow Arms is an 81-unit, existing, low-rise housing development built circa 1970. I'm gonna give you a full screen.
I would try, but something happens when we stream with the Zoom chair.
The next one with the colors will be better, too, you know?
So you can set up and slide, you can set up slideshow.
There you go.
All right. 81, existing, low-rise housing development. This is Elm Street. This is the parking lot and driveway that surrounds the development. These are the seven buildings that make up the bulk of the, that make up all of the living units, and they center on a central green space, and there's a community building and a playground in the rear. It's an approximately eight-and-a-half acre site, and, next slide, let me see. So the neighborhood of Terriffill is a typical New England village with a mix of housing types and styles, including picket fences, walkable streets, sidewalks there, and sometimes even colorful displays of civic engagements. Next slide. Willow Arms was last renovated in 1996/97, when wood siding, porches, and community buildings were added. Though the property has had continuous routine maintenance since that time, it is overdue for a refurbishment that brings it up to modern requirements of energy efficiency, improved living standards for the residents, and appropriate neighborhood presence in Terriffill. This is the site demo plan, it's a little hard to see what's being demoed, but it shows the removal of existing oil tanks that are with fence around them, asphalt walkways and curving in the driveway area, the dumpster pads, the existing dumpster pads, the bike, existing bike racks, bent railings, and uneven or damaged pavement, and the axes show trees to be removed. Next slide. The proposed site plan shows new dumpster locations that have been moved away from the catch basins, specifically, there is a currently existing dumpster pad right next to this catch basin, so we're moving it down here. These two catch basins are a little harder to see, but there's an existing dumpster pad right there that we're moving down here. We would like to have moved them further away from those catch basins if we could, but as you see, those catch basins are sort of equally placed here and here, and the only other option would be to completely get rid of dumpsters on the side, which, if you look, you can see there's one dumpster per building group. So we're proposing new concrete paths, fencing enclosures, and bear-resistant dumpsters, which we understand has been a major source of problems, especially in the rear of the We're also adding new sidewalks, a resurfaced driveway, new asphalt curving, new accessible parking spaces and walkways, new bike racks, mailboxes at pavilion, and grilling areas, and a new generator location at the community building. Next slide, the proposed lighting shows new parking lot lighting. Each little red space right now, each little red dot is a light pole, and new lighting along the pathways of the interior courtyard. Now, we owe you a photometric plan for this lighting. We are about a week delayed due to an unfortunate time of your vacation, but the photometric plan will inform replacement of these if they are correctly placed. There might be some slight adjustments to this, depending on the results of the photometric, but obviously, we will abide by the rules not to spill water over the property line. Next slide, the proposed planting plan shows new shrubs and trees. You can see they have the tags on them usually typically. And if you go to the next and large one of the planting plant, it shows the flowering, planting, and ground cover around the buildings. We didn't know too late that this planting plant does not show the porches, so there will be slight modifications where the porches will be. Next slide, these are some of the details, mailbox, this is a very schematic, it will not look like that pavilion idea, the bear-encended dumpsters, which are specially designed to prevent bear intrusion, and then dumpster enclosure, fencing, and gates. So here's a closer look at the buildings. This is the existing conditions on the street side view. Challenges we have include that the brick is in relatively good condition, and we want to keep it, but the window openings are pretty small compared to the massive building, and the buildings are just very plain. Hardly, there's one bump, you can hardly see it, but it's basically just a big rectangle with blocks with cables on it. So next slide, we're adding shutters and window boxes on the street-facing side to help the small window openings have more presence. We're adding two-story porches, mostly on the courtyard sides of the building, but we're adding this one on the street side, along the main street facade. There are new overhangs at the basement doors, which you can see from the side view here and here, and then new siding roofing and exterior trim. Next slide, on the courtyard sides of the buildings, additional challenges included the striking of alternating brick and siding, which aren't equal in width, and the awkward corner connections of the building brick themselves. So we're proposing two-story porches on the courtyard side that will give each resident a private outdoor space. So each unit will have a porch that is, and those porches are accessible only from inside the unit, near the front doors. So they are connected by an expanded one-story entry porch, and to address the strike facade problem, we chose to install siding that is the same color as the brick, so that it blends into the background and becomes background to the new porches, which will have different So next slide, the existing driveway side shows the need of the building for refurbishment. Clearly, they're alone, past their sale-by-date. So proposed for, on the next slide, new porches, siding, roofing, windows, and doors.
And that garage is maintenance for the facility?
That's the main, existing maintenance garage, yes. And that will get a new door, too. So next slide shows the colors, selected colors of the fiber cement siding and trim. The owner selected these three colors for the porches. We've got, this is the red that will be the background to blend in with the brick, and it actually blends better than you're seeing here on the side. This is the new roofing, and then the white trim that's proposed. And that fiber cement siding is hardy lap siding and hardy shingle siding. So final slide, here's our proposed new work of the arms. The goal of the project is to provide improved and more visually attractive living spaces for the residents, incorporating increased energy efficiency, improved indoor air quality, new private outdoor spaces, improved public outdoor spaces, improved trash management, and enhanced building facades that are better suited to the design standards of Simsbury.
I saw our designer view unanimously voted in favor. I think the changes are great, and I also want to thank you, I saw all the comments from town staff that you addressed, and I appreciate that.
We appreciate the feedback, we appreciate you.
Well, I will just say, as the lone Terriffill resident here, I'm thrilled. Yeah, it most definitely is an improvement. It looks lovely. It's funny, because the two things that were brought to my attention by some folks were the bears, and I was gonna ask about the bears, so that's great, and just the lighting, lighting concerns, because, you know, the house, some of the houses do back up pretty close there, so, so as to not have it be too bright for the neighbors, but otherwise, I see no negatives here, I think it looks beautiful.
Was any consideration done for anything solar?
There will be solar, I can mention that.
Right.
So they currently have existing solar hot water on the roofs now. That will be taken down as it's not functioning, it's not functioning, but we will be putting up new PV panels on the set of those rooms. This patio is going to be extremely green. We're doing geothermal for the heating systems. So, yeah, we're trying to kind of knock it out of the box in that respect, and with the funding that they're applying for that, really get the system up.
Could you give a little more description to that? What is the geothermal heating system that you're interested in?
So geothermal, we'll dig several wells in the driveway... So, geothermal will dig several wells in the driveway area that will then be invisible once it is repaved. You never go back to those wells, apparently, part of the two, it's guy, you just drill and you want to, it's in the area, in that case, that existing will fail. But that provides a continuous stream of water or certain temperature that comes in and basically forms in the heating system because of that steady temperature.
And the photoelectric, the panels that are going on the roof are to produce electricity for use on the property in these units?
So PV panels are never, they're just tied back to the grid. They're, you know, it's not really, unless you install battery backup and really try to get off the grid, which is something different, all it really does is provides credit on your living will, it is your usage, so.
Sounds like a very large solar farm. Thank you.
Good use of those roofs.
Yeah.
So lots of trees that make the site very lovely and attractive and do reduce the solar capacity, so it's, it definitely has capacity, but it's not amazing capacity.
Now, to the panels, I mean, I know that there's been a lot of changes since, like, the old-fashioned, like, big, just flat panels, like, are they, are they obvious from, you know, will you be able to really see that there are panels on there, or will they be, you know?
Yeah, we won't be doing a testless show, the solar shade. There won't be panels that you can see, there won't be, they're fairly intrusive, you know? They're there, you see, if you start looking for panels, you'll see them.
Yeah.
These days.
Yeah, when they first came out, you would notice them, but now that's kind of commonplace.
Yeah, you're right.
It doesn't really seem to detract. This schematic here has some, has more trees than, more open space than I thought when you're looking at the plan. It looks like it's, there's not a whole lot of play area out there, I guess I would say.
There actually is quite a bit. I know, I realize the trees do make the site plan, but, you know, you have to imagine they're up here, kids are playing. There's quite a bit of green space inside that courtyard. It's really a lovely courtyard.
And our other, I don't even know, I didn't see benches when I went through by it, but is there something to make it?
So, part of the site, we will add, will be benches. So, we're actually meeting with the residents next Monday evening to reveal of the proposed site enhancements with them to make sure that they want them.
Yeah, okay. Is there any, you know, garden space for it, for example?
Well, so, a community garden space is on the agenda. So the problem with community gardens is the bears. We don't want to just provide more vegetables for the bears to eat. But the residents themselves are, have, have some lovely flower gardens around the buildings now, so we're looking at giving those spaces, you know, providing flower gardens for the residents.
Oh, and I think there was a mention about grills, right?
Oh, right, yes, grills. So, the idea is that we will have one permanently attached grill on a concrete pad, sort of in the green space in front of each building group, and then a picnic table inside it with, like, gravel and crushed wood. And the grills right now that are tenant-owned and they're parked wherever they're parked right now, as the fire marshal said, it's a hazard. So, the proposal is to, once this is done, to prohibit tenants from owning grills themselves, but they'll be able to use the grill if they're permanently attached to the place that can't be moved.
And how many units are in each one of those buildings?
It's four units.
So it is four, you said they were individual porches?
Right, so it's four per little building within the three, so four serves twelve.
Yeah. Okay. Are you doing any interior renovations while you're doing this?
Absolutely, we are bedding the units so that we can put more insulation in the exterior walls from the inside. And because of that, well, not because of it, but in conjunction with that, all new kitchen cabinets, all new plumbing appliance fixtures, kitchen cabinets and appliances, so they'll have a brand new look.
Yeah, nice, nice.
That's great.
That's huge.
And it's a occupied renovation, so we'll be.
Just moving people around. Any other questions?
Just, did I understand that the photometric plan is not available at this point?
Not available at this time, but we will get it to you as soon as it is.
Well, so if we go, right, that's what I was going to, okay.
Yep, anybody else?
Just, I looked at the drawings, and I probably covered this as I stepped up. The footprints of these buildings are unchanged. Is that a correct statement? Okay.
Well, with the exception of the porches.
Yeah. Oh, right, 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 right.
But we're doing that very delicately because we're participating in a enterprise green communities program that limits the amount of disturbance to five thousand square feet. So they're going to be, for those porches, they're going to be doing the construction, the Bigfoots, they're called, which is like a sonnet tube with a flared bottom. So, those are going to be very limited excavations for those, so they can stand.
So they're creating a level space and not necessarily one that's 42 inches deep?
No, so they'll dig a small hole, a five-by-five hole, to install that Bigfoot that is 42 inches down.
Okay, got it.
So it's below frost.
Okay.
But they're not going to come in and dig big swats for all of these porches. They're going to dig two holes per porch, and we're going to make them.
Okay.
Is it, is it one-way around there, or is it two-way?
No, it's two-way.
It is two-way?
Yeah, there's these few bumps that we're going to replace into.
And you are, I did notice, because I did notice yesterday when I drove through, that there was angled parking, but your new plan doesn't show that. Your new plan showed.
Straight in.
Straight in.
Yeah, I think.
I didn't know if that was intentional.
There's some angled parking that I think, well, right, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed it on, I don't even know which direction.
Existing condition plan.
On the riverside of it.
Yeah, unfortunately, you lose a little bit, so there's a, there's an angle in.
Yeah, it's faint, but like, I noticed that.
Yeah, pretty, that's where I noticed it, yeah.
But most of it, I think it's straight in.
Straight in, yeah.
And straight in.
It was, but then the new plan has it all straight in. Okay. So that's why I was wondering if that was going to change to a one-way.
There's not other messes in the parking spaces where it can be.
Or disturb it.
I mean, we have, we will be relocating a couple when we had to relocate the dumpsters. The parking spaces will have to move over to where the dumpsters were, but it's the same number.
And access to the dumpster, we haven't seen, you know, what your enclosure is going to look like, but is there, in addition to the wide one that would be for the removal, is there a person-friendly one? Yes.
Yes, the pedestrian.
And what's your time plan, timeframe for this project?
So, it would go, it's going for funding at the end of the year, closing is the longest wait for state-funded projects. And then this particular one, because it's, so, let's say another year to close. So say it starts in 2024. I think we're estimating 14 months because of the occupied renovation part of it. I know a contractor would love to get in there and do it all at once and be done in nine months, but we have to settle down, so it's 14 months at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ready for motion?
Sure.
You gonna do it, Jack?
I, I think Bruce is going to do it.
Okay, let me just get my hands on it. This is?
Yeah, I think he's.
That's the bottom one.
Other side.
Yeah, it starts there and continues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's huge.
Okay.
It's huge.
I move that we approve application 2226 of Willow Arms Mutual Housing Association. Owner, Susan Odell, applicant for a plan, a site plan amendment pursuant to Section 11 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to perform site improvements to exterior or interior features, parking lot lighting, and landscaping of 55 Elm Street. Assessor's office map K04, block 127, lot 016, zone R15/R25. The commission finds the proposal conforms to the site plan requirements found in Section 11 of the zoning regulations, subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan set entitled Willow Arms Redevelopment dated 11022, revised 91622. Number two, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the architectural set entitled Willow Arms Schematic Design dated 11022, revised 91622. Condition three, the applicant shall submit two sets of MyLars and one paper set of approved documents for signature and recordation. Item four, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Item five, the commission authorizes staff to approve minor changes to the approved plans such as landscaping, grading, et cetera. Said changes are to be made in writing to staff and approved prior to implementation. Number six is submission of a satisfactory, to town staff, of a satisfactory photoelectric.
Photometric.
Photometric plan prior to.
Issuance of building.
Issuance of the building permit. End of motion.
Thank you for writing such a wonderful, draft, and hit the wonderful motion.
I would second that.
Who was that?
I do.
Jackie?
Oh, you got it.
All right. Any more discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, would it be?
To move the agenda around?
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
Okay, I think that.
What were you, what were you thinking there?
I was thinking that maybe we should hear 33 Canal Street, so.
Since they've been waiting for all this time?
Because they've been waiting.
They've been having a good time. This is entertaining.
They have been.
This is better than anything on TV.
I feel like they're entertaining.
Oh, they're always like this. Thank you, that's a good idea.
No, thanks.
All right, so, okay, so that's a motion, right, to amend the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion for that.
Move up.
I will second that.
33 Canal Street. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And number 33 Canal Street, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Are you Stephanie Ma?
She's Stephanie Ma.
If you could give your name and address, and since you apparently aren't Stephanie Ma, you're in.
Louis George from Hassan George. I represent Jessica and Jonathan Starr, who are under contract to purchase the property continuing upon. So, the property 33 Canal Street has historically been used as a doctor's office for a great deal of times, located on Canal Street, but right at the intersection with Hot Meadow. Has a longer driveway to the back area, very conducive to the, to Route 10, and conducive to a professional office use. Our opinion then that it, as a doctor's office, falls under the definition of a professional office already. There's some question about that with staff, and what we want to do is clarify and ask the zoning commission for a finding that a professional office use is appropriate for that location, and at least as appropriate as a present non-conforming use, or more appropriate. We think it's the same thing, we think it's a doctor's office, professional, and this is going to be professional offices and start out as a Realtor's office. In addition, the, there's an upstairs apartment, and want to make sure that that, that will remain as an apartment, since that's always been the case. So historically, it's been an apartment and a doctor's office. Moving forward, it's going to be a, an apartment and the Realtor's office under a professional office situation. So we're looking for a finding from the zoning commission on that basis.
Any particular real estate office?
The only thing I would add, if you know what, this is probably something this commission has not done a lot of. So, so that section 7.5.2 does explicitly say that the zoning commission, when there's a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, shall make a finding that the proposed use is equal or more appropriate. So our determination is this, that medical office in your zoning regulations is listed as a separate use, separate from professional office, so that's why we have brought it to you today, to that finding.
And why would that be?
Why is medical office different than professional office? I think typically, medical offices are expected to generate a little bit more traffic, and therefore, I think is a little bit more of an intense use.
Are you aware of the history of that building?
It was like a community home, and then the sweet doctor, you will own it forever. But you can tell me more.
Well, not now, but. It is the Weetag Community Center.
I remember that.
And then Dr. Murphy.
And again, there's so much frontage, it's like the driveway's on the Mall, but it really should be Hot Meadow because of where the frontage is. I think it's just a lot. Sorry.
No, they, they changed Canal Street.
Only changed Canal.
Well, they changed all of that, the whole area.
Made it into Hot Meadow, right, yeah.
Okay, well, that was a sidebar there. Any questions from anybody?
I don't have a concern making this finding of being a professional office. It seems like it's located in the right zone, and it seems like a less intrusive use than the medical. I feel like there would be less.
We're being asked to preserve the medical use for the next tenant. If the owner wants to lease it to a medical use, they get to do that, right?
No, no, it would be our position that the applicant is changing from a non-conforming use, which is a medical office. To another non-conforming use, that you have to make a finding, that I think you have to make.
But if we, if we make the requested finding.
I think you have to make a separate.
What's to, then, then you're, the point, the fine point you're trying to make is that they need to come back here, to go back to a medical use. The owner needs, oh, but.
But you could.
There's further precedent that.
You start treating people, you have to come back.
This thing goes back and forth.
I would, I would just, I would like to just state it for the record, I respectfully disagree with that, because I think if you look at professional office, it says, "The office recognized professions such as doctors, lawyers, dentists, architects, engineers, artists." So the professional office definition has doctors in it, and this was historically a doctors. So, in, in our position is that it has been used as a professional office and will continue to be used as a professional office. It was that distinction made, which is fine, but then it gets, it gets to your point, I would say, to answer your question, it would not have to come back because it'd still be, it would still be a professional office use if it were a doctor's office in the future.
That was my understanding of what you submitted.
Those doctors are professional.
So you're saying that's not true?
Real estate agents.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Well, okay, well, there's been.
So I would be finding in favor.
I think he's asking you to make a finding that professional office is equal or more appropriate than medical use.
I did.
I concur.
All right, well, then, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. What would you like me to, to say that I'm?
I wanted you to do something clever like the one that's.
Perhaps something like this.
Okay. I would like to make a motion.
Thank you.
The following findings pursuant to 7.5.2, non-conforming use of structures at the property located at 33 Canal Street, the use of the professional office is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the R15 district than the existing non-conforming use, a medical office. These findings are pertaining to substituting the use only and not expanding the physical location of the use or number of non-conforming uses allowed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will second that.
We have any more discussion here?
Getting eager.
I, I would actually make the one statement that, you know, in the past, I was alone a commissioner that actually voted that this whole area should be business area.
I agree.
And over time, it would be nice to have that.
That would be an interesting conversation.
Yeah.
There's been some sensitivity for some years about residents.
We're going to do Terriffill first.
That's further down South School. It's been a doctor's office and a residence, and the holding was that if the residence wasn't there, the doctor couldn't be in practice there.
Wow.
So, we're, we're given two different signals here, and, you know, I would expect that we may hear from the other folks.
Oh, there's other, more properties there that just, that just area, that whole area just seems to make sense. And we actually had a mini shret once on the whole, on that area, and just never went further, so.
The plan of conservation and development does say to enhance that Weetag Center area.
Yes.
Build it as a center.
That's the goal.
Yes.
So it'd be a good place to get some of the buy-in now. So it'd be a good place to get some of the buy-in now, right? Before All right. We have a motion, we have a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Both? That's unanimous.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, come back next week.
You're welcome.
Next time.
Okay.
All right.
So where do we go back to, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, we are back to cannabis update.
Okay.
Text amendment. Does staff have an introduction to this one?
So I just want to remind you, I flew where I, where I did, and then we did produce an update memo for you that didn't include some answers to some of your questions from the town attorney. The text amendment that is included is unchanged from your meeting on July 18th. So they didn't have any direction to make any changes. So what the text amendment said, just a reminder, it allows retail cannabis as a special exception used in select B3 areas, and when I say select, I mean the area essentially at, at the corner of, I think that's the southwest corner of town at, at the ready for manufacturing, population, those kind of processing things are proposed as permitted by special exception in both the I-1 and I-2 zoning districts. Neither are permitted by the, in this draft in the center zone, or the Hartford Sims area. I'm happy to answer any questions. What I would, what I would ask you to do tonight to kind of keep moving, you have a moratorium that is up on November 8th. So, you know, I did have a conversation with, with the chairman, and he, he recommend, I recommend that you schedule the text amendment for public hearing. I have the public hearing on October 17th, and also schedule a public hearing for the moratorium on 17th, because if you don't take action on October 17th, there's no guarantee you'll take action on, on that first meeting, right? But if you did, you can release it standing in the moratorium, and, you know, for a period of three, six months. So, so I guess I'm asking you tonight, essentially, is to schedule those two public hearings, and if there's any additional changes you want to see.
I'm okay with doing that, but other than that, a couple of comments. One of the letters from the town attorney, Bob DiCrescenzo, to you, he was answering some of our questions, it looked like it referenced a population cap. Okay, and I believe that the state assembly has done away with that, so I just wanted to make sure that that's
Yeah, he, he, first, and then actually, it looks like they can come back in '24 and make a new cap.
He went a long way
Yeah.
On that paragraph. I, I think he was really, you know, lawyers do, I think, you know, kind of restating what the facts are, you know, there was a cap at, at $25,000, then there was a change, and he's suggesting that there could be additional caps in the future
Okay.
Coming from, from the state.
But we could do our own cap, regardless of what the state does.
Absolutely, is what he said.
I just want to be clear, because this is such an intricate, new regulation or amendment, so I just, you know, because this is in the record, that's all.
Excellent.
And, and what we've also talked about was, you know, what happens if you, if we have one permit, we grant it to someone, then either they don't perform, bill it out, or they go out of business. You know, then we can't move it anywhere else, because once you approve something, it stays with that property forever.
Mm-hmm.
And so that was a consideration.
So, and I think some of the, I, I think, you know, some of our discussion was, of course, the contract does cap at one. It seems to me that, that I think that you can, you can handle those through the approval process, and through specific conditions of approval related to that specific location or that specific use, you know, including but not limited to, um, the requirement to achieve the state license within six months of issuance, or those kinds of things.
If we had a liaison here from the board of selectmen, it would be good to know what was going on in their minds.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Or to go over, if you could
Speak more on what's on their minds, and then worry about
I think I missed the first five minutes of the comment, I don't think it'd be fair to
No, we were just wondering, because you, we're selectmen, have obviously had a conversation about this as well, because the town manager has requested opinions from the, from the town attorney.
I think that it's fair to say, I think that, that I need to come up to the podium and bid whom I am in my
Yeah, well, you, you can tell us who you are.
Of course, me as the board of selectmen. So I think that it's fair to say that it came, it's, contextually, it's come into conversation because of comments made, because of the expiration of
The moratorium.
Which was around about, what, 11-1 of last year. So, the
No, this year. It'll be this year.
November 18th.
It was, it was 11-1 last year.
November 8th this year.
So the, so the end is coming into sight. So then it could actually start to come into conversation, should the board be more, frankly, I will speak to the board, that's myself, should I be more current with the direction of any conversations that are potentially starting to reoccur because of the end of that quarter? So, then it became, and I'm sort of paraphrasing, then it became one of, well, should we be entering in, should we get clarity from the town attorney, as to who really should be speaking to this matter as we get closer to the end? Should we be speaking to it, or should we you be speaking to it? I say that as, I don't necessarily, I'm not looking necessarily for ownership of who's better positioned to speak to it, I just want, I think we just needed clarity to who should be speaking to it first, so that we're not either tripping over each other, and we're being, and we're being efficient, and respectful of not wasting, you know, I don't want to waste your time. I've been through, I've been through the work of this process, I, I know. So, I think that, to, to, to sum up, and to make, be, in a sense, ineptly, I don't know that we have, the board has not formulated a position, the board is looking to determine to make, to make sure that we're, we're, we're walking down the correct path as it relates to process, and, and for an efficient process, so
Okay, I think, and I don't know that I can speak for the board, but I think what we were looking to for the selectmen is maybe an ordinance that would regulate use. Can you smoke on the sidewalks of downtown? So that is something that we would not address, because that's not a zoning issue, but that is something that the selectmen could address, the same as you would, you know, an open model.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I think that, that is, that's one of the tangential, that's one of the conversations that is, that is a byproduct of this larger conversation, in the sense that it's pushing that conversation to the forefront. And if you go to the meeting, if you go to our past meeting, or just most recent meeting
September 12th.
September, is that what it was?
Yep, George can give us a summary, he, he helped.
Correct. So if you go to that meeting, there was a defer, a defer, a defer, a deference to getting clarity from Bob, really, can't even answer your question directly, that one, which was, who should, do we need to, who should speak to this? Should we not waste your time, essentially? And had he go through a conversation around retail cannabis, and should we just put for, in front of the board of selectmen, a vote to either up or down of whether we should allow retail cannabis? And we are waiting for that decision, or figuring that opinion? I'm looking to you for it, because I
Well, we have the opinion, so
Okay, so we don't have it, because it hasn't been presented to us, because
The opinion from
It hasn't been presented to us either.
Answering
I'm not sure what you mean.
In the opinion.
As far as the process, who could, is it, should
So that, so, so I think, Bob, I think Bob has addressed that, in my opinion, I think that's, the question is, you, you, you could act as a board of selectmen on your own or independently of the zoning commission.
Yeah, so I don't know that that
And come to a different conclusion.
Well, no, they could, they could decide that we don't want cannabis retail at all in the town.
Correct, which then would negate the need for
A zoning
Zoning, correct. So, movement on zoning. So that is what I'm, clearly, I'm not being eloquent and being clear about, that is what we were unclear of, at least I was unclear of, last Monday night, whether we could establish that, whether we could take that step first, before it went to your boards or your work.
And then what I was looking for was, what stops us from hav, having our own zoning regulation that contradicts what you did?
Well, because they would override us.
Well, I guess that's the question, should we have the hearing where that's
And that's in the letter, the update.
Because of the timeframe, I would say, we should continue along with the public hearing process, to, to publicize it. It will have a cost, because we have to pay to put it in the paper, but hopefully, we would get some feedback from the selectmen prior to that, before the public hearing, it would be good to see, you know, if you guys think that, you know, it's not, it's totally inappropriate at all in the town, then we would need to know that from the board of selectmen, and then we could just close our public hearing pretty quickly. But absent you guys coming back to us, then we would, you know, could put our own ordinance into, our own reg into place, which would, currently, we're suggesting that it be limited to one retail establishment within the area of 1,000, 1,500 feet of down where McDonald's is. That's where we're, that's the only area where we're saying we would allow it.
But, wait a minute, I think we need to talk about the process again, because I'm concerned that in the press, I've seen a number of suggestions somehow, that the board of the zoning commission, while they don't assert that we voted on this before, they give the impression that the way we have drafted and discussed a proposed motion, that the prevalent sentiment here is that we should endorse cannabis in a variety of forms in the town of Simsbury, under regulation. And that's not the case. What's missing is an explanation that the strategy of this commission has for some time now, been to develop a, a
Yes.
Develop a, a, well, a summary of what we're acting on, in an affirmative voice, so that it supports what the application was requesting. And that way, we can always vote yes or no, and it's up or down on the application, basically. There's no confusion. We used to have confusion. People would make these recommendations, and sometimes it was supportive, sometime the, sometimes the, the, the motion was in opposition to what was requested, and it was confusing. It confused the listeners, the viewers, the members, everybody. So now, it's our mission to create something to put in front of ourselves, to support what was requested.
So
And we vote that up or down. And because we've spent time on that, and that's what's gotten some attention, there's a presumption that that's an indication that we are
No, so I think that that's what, what
Or don't. Why not?
I, I agree, I think I agree with you. In, in the sense that
It's being misread.
I'm a process person, okay? And although, Jacky will know, I also am alone in ministry, yeah, to the point of ministry. But what I was, what I was looking for, I say, I don't, I don't, it's just like, no, I don't necessarily look at what you all do as voting in affirmative, affirmative or not. I think what you're, what you're do, you, clarifying where retail, where cannabis could be retailed is not, in my mind, stating that you're supporting the, the retail of cannabis. That, to me, is walking through a process, and, and updating your, our ordinances or our laws in town. So to me, it's, there's a difference there. What I was looking for, so why this, so I hope to sum this all up, from my position was, we were, if, if, if the town attorney indicated that there was no, that, that the board of selectmen should, has the capacity to take a vote on the retail of cannabis up or down, and that would supersede any work that you all would be doing, that's what I was looking for. But in absence of that, I'm, I'm not adverse to you doing your work to, in my, in my view, which is clarifying and updating our town guidelines, ordinances, regulations. So that's what, but if he's already stating that we have the ability to vote, then I think we should bring it back to the board of selectmen to
He, he is saying that, and it's
But that was not clear on Tuesday night.
And that would be, that, that would be by ordinance, so it'd be an ordinance process.
Yeah, okay, that was not clear on that, because if you go back to the, hey, say, go back to the tape.
It's clear in the letter he wrote.
Three different ways, and then I was like, I'm sorry, maybe I'm just pick, I'm not hearing it, can you please state, very basically, are we, are you going to get us an opinion whether or not we have the ability to vote ahead of work that you do, so it doesn't waste your time, in a sense, but all, so, now we have clarity, and I think we'll bring that to discussion for next meeting.
Okay, well, I would still suggest that we continue along our path because of timing, and then, you know, at the public hearing, we could say, vote no, you know, the, the feedback from the selectmen is they're not interested, and we would just vote no, and we'd be done. But I think, you know, to preserve the procedure, we should, the process, we should just vote at this point to schedule the public hearing, and see where we go from there. And then we'd also vote to schedule a public hearing on the continuation of the moratorium.
I have a couple other things, but I think Bruce just
No, I, I think that we have an obligation to vote what we as individuals believe is the right thing for the people who live in Simsbury. I'm not suggesting the, the board of selectmen couldn't come to a valid conclusion also, but I wouldn't vote to rubber stamp what they did, because they voted for it. I'm not there. I'm voting for something, because I think it's right for the town. But I also don't feel, as long as, you know, I'm, I'm boring you with my thoughts, but I don't think that we should go forward with both these things on the same day. I think what we should do is extend the moratorium, take the steps to extend the moratorium six more months. It gives the board of selectmen time, and Bob DiCrescenzo has a, sort of a protracted process whenever he gets involved in anything. I don't know that you're gonna have a lot of clarity, you know, in the next couple of weeks, but I think that we're rushing
Well, you can always
There's no need
Schedule the public hearing.
Um, yes, but
You're saying, don't schedule it for October 17th?
Well, the thing is, I don't think that we could come to a conclusion unless, I don't know how, if we see the response from the community, now we've alerted some folks that they need to watch out for things coming up in the town, like ADU discussions, because they're getting left out. And so, if they're sort of alerted, there's a thing coming on marijuana, that you look at what's happened in some towns, they've had a lot of public comment happen at these public meeting, meetings. And I think we have an obligation to the people who take the time to come and share their opinions.
Yeah, well, that's, you need a public hearing to do that.
Serious, no, to give it thoughtful consideration. And I think if you get hit with a fire hose from all those people with all that stuff, you can't, 10 minutes after the meetings, the public hearing is ended, you can't vote on it and say, we gave it proper
We don't have to vote on it.
You don't have to, you can continue.
I know.
Okay.
But when do we? When do
That's up to us.
Continue it.
And when do they act?
I, I will say that, that I have the mindset, Bruce, of, of you, in the sense that, tonight was, was a little bit, it was a night, it was a very illuminating night, and, and there are friends of mine here, who I, somewhat, you know, I, I disagree, not disagree, but have different perspectives, because I'm disagreeing, and I was assuming that, I was, I was hoping that possibly through, see, I don't think this, this conversation has occurred enough in this town, at the, at the time, at a broad level. Now, we know that we, your challenge, in a unique town of such, a town of such community engagement, is shocking sometimes, how little people come out for things. And, and, and that's not, that's a negative, that's not a negative connotation, but it's just, it's shock, shocking. I think maybe that's because people have a lot of faith in the people that work in this building, and, and who are elected here to sort of be the representatives, and are on the same sort of queue they are. I don't know. But I felt like there had not yet been enough conversation around this topic. So I thought that because we saw the end coming into view, and then you folks potentially re-engaging in a conversation, possibly that extension or not, but re-engaging in a conversation, might eliminate the issue to more, to the town again, and then people might become engaged, and then me, as someone who could potentially have decided to vote on this, might learn something else other than my own opinion, which is what I was hoping would happen, potentially as an option of your, your conversations continuing to occur. But that may not have been, because we have a different
Well, we both have the same process of doing public hearings, and that's how we get the public input. So that's why I'm saying, I think we should continue along with the public hearing, so we got input, you don't have to vote 10 minutes.
Well, the thing is, what I'm concerned about is this, that we have the latitude to propose what we want the public to consider at the public hearing. And if we decide after we've given that, and they've given input, we have some limitations on how much we can change the wording and the accomplishment of that document before it invalidates the hearing, and you have to have another public hearing. You can't simply, but we have a responsibility to, to end the end, settle on something we're all feeling, that at least four of us feel is the right thing for Simsbury. No, that's, that's.
But we won't find that out until we do a public hearing.
Yeah.
So we need the public hearing in order to get public.
At that point, you get a sense of.
If we had the press in the room.
How close you are in your own.
He does my comments.
Now, so what we'll know after that date is we know something about what, how close our own thinking is to the.
To the public.
To the public.
That's what we need.
The, one thing I would say, though, Chris, your notion of you can do something with an ordinance that says just retail, there's, I don't know, there's something like, I forget the total count of the types of licenses that are, are at issue.
Mm-hmm.
And the retail sales is only one, and that's assuming.
Flashpoint.
The medical, yeah. But we're talking about the same thing. Overall, yes, or overall, no. Now, we can't do anything about Curaleaf, they're here. They have a valid license. They're not going anywhere.
Well, that's medical.
Prohibited. We're prohibited.
I'm, I think with 99% of people not knowing, probably here. But I think, just going back, Kevin, I mean, that, we all wanted, I had to go to the athletic pickup, so I'm sorry, you guys, that's why I ran out. But I, you also are having a discussion around use of marijuana in, as a separate part of this extended awareness of this issue.
Okay, and you want to ask a question?
George, could you just give us, there was a Board of Selectmen meeting on September 12th that you, we talked about, and there were some questions in there posed by Maria Capriola to the town attorney. Like, one of the questions was about if there could be a referendum. Could you just speak in general terms what you took out of that meeting? So we have, because it's, the letter's in our packet, but I just.
So, so, again, these were two questions really focused by the Board of Selectmen to the town attorney.
Yep.
It was a kind of a companion or a sister.
Yep.
Letter, questions on behalf of the zoning commission. So I mean, the Board of Selectmen had a, had a discussion about it, I just came in at the end, and we talked about what are you, what are the options? I think it was, what if somebody did a referendum, which, you know, a referendum is permitted underneath, under, under that legislation requires 10, 10%? 10%. Significantly 10%? And that could, you know, that would, that would go on, you know, a primary election day, I don't remember, I guess. And then, yes, the, the Board of Selectmen could act on their own by, by ordinance again, that probably would require a public hearing. Or, of course, the zoning commission would act by, by text amendment to your zoning regulations, and it all acted anytime, but of course, the Board of Selectmen action supersedes.
Right.
The zoning commission's action. And a referendum supersedes both the Board of Selectmen action and zoning commission.
And you said that guidelines have passed for a referendum for this year?
No, yeah, yes.
For this year?
There can be no referendum.
It's, it's passed. And I think that.
Just asking, George.
Yeah, but I want, to be fair, to be, I just want to be clear for the folks that didn't watch that fantastically.
Was it as good as this one? What were your ratings?
First of all, you have a bigger crowd than yours, and we, at least you have a laugh. But just to be clear, I think the, the context on Monday night came up, how as we do our end, we have these, something's left for the days on reports, and someone made a reference to that you all were going to be considering this. It wasn't as if it was a point of conversation topically up until that point, and then it just sort of spiraled out, but then an open conversation. So that was what played out.
One other thing.
I know, but it's important, before we do that.
Okay, one more.
So you said if we wanted to make any changes, so going through this, it looked like on page 27 and 32, that medical was crossed out. Was that meant to be?
Yes, it was meant to be.
Why? And does Curaleaf know that they're nonconforming?
Of course, the town attorney is reviewing this language, but my understanding, my reading of, of the state legislation, the definitions included, that the gen, medical marijuana sale, medical marijuana production is included in the larger definition of cannabis sales, cannabis processing, cannabis cultivation.
So how do we?
They don't need to single it out. They are manufacturing or cultivating cannabis. Doesn't matter who it's for, whether it's for retail or whether it's for medical.
But it's a completely different license.
Yes, it is a completely different license, but we're not, this, the text, the text amendment doesn't, doesn't identify each and every license. It, it, it identifies it as a land use. And so in this case, we would, we would see cultivation of cannabis, processing in cannabis.
Okay.
Under this, under this draft, would be permitted in I-1 and I-2, and without any distinction of whether it's for medical or for retail consumption. If, if, you know, if, if the town attorney sees that, I think it's solved with the parental, including retail cannabis.
I, I'm not in agreement, and I, I'm anxious that Bob only hears your viewpoint. You know, I think that distinction's significant and should be preserved.
I do too. Yeah.
So just know that.
No, it's our, no, so it's our feedback, that's all, because I saw this, and I'm like, we need to talk to Curaleaf.
Well, the projection about the market size.
Could get into too recreational.
Correct, but my concern is right now, they would be a nonconforming use, with the cross out.
No, because they, they qualify under cannabis establishment limited to cultivator.
Doesn't say medical.
It doesn't have to be medical.
So the simple solution would be to, to, to include it at that time.
Thank you.
Or, or.
Just dot in my eyes.
How do you make that change?
My, thank you. Kevin?
All right, so are we ready for a motion here?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Could you make the motion?
I can make two of them, if you'd like.
Well, one at a time.
Okay. Cannabis text amendment moved the zoning commission direct staff to schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2022, on the text amendment for cannabis establishments dated July 18, 2022.
And as amended.
And as amended tonight.
Okay, second?
Second.
All favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Well, you want to have a discussion on this?
Yes. I'm not sure I understand what the communication to the public will be. And are they, is everybody going to be able to come into the office and get a copy of this material without Bob's letter? But it's the rest of it verbatim, the way we have it.
Okay. Ready for a vote now?
Yes.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right.
Okay.
41.
So that was the first one.
When they.
Okay.
Second one.
Second one. I make a motion, this is for the extension of cannabis moratorium. The zoning commission directs staff to schedule a public hearing for October 17, 2022, on the text amendment to extend the temporary cannabis moratorium for six additional months from November 8, 2022, to May 8, 2023.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have that one, Dan. All right, do we have a discussion? Want to discuss it? No. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was unanimous. Okay, what else we got going here? Next item is residential parking space standards opt-out from Public Act 2129.
Yeah, so, so, for you, and we're out of.
Thank you, Mr. Liaison.
Good night.
Good night. So if, if you recall, when you, when you, when you went through the opt-out provisions for the accessory dwelling units, the original notice and included part of the also opting out of the parking space, PA 2129 had two zoning issues that you could opt out of, accessory dwelling units and parking requirements. There was a mandatory parking requirement included in PA 21 for all residential uses. When I reviewed your, your, your resolution, the resolution that you adopted ultimately on January 3, 2021, did not include any reference to the sections of PA 2129 related to, to residential parking, nor did include any language or justification for that. So I had a conversation with the town attorney, and recommend, we both recommend that you simply hold another public hearing and, uh, do whatever you want, but consider the resolution to opt out of the parking standards, just to, just to be safe. And I will tell you that we have, in order to kind of keep the ball rolling, remember, we've got to get it back to the Board of Selectmen, so we have already advertised that for your October 3 meeting.
Okay. So there's no action for us needed tonight?
There's no action, I just.
Do we not formally need to set it ourselves, even though you did it?
I don't think you have to, actually, but you certainly, you certainly could.
Okay, I just thought we already set them.
Do you want me to?
Certainly, you'd be great to do it.
So we would.
Mr. Chairman would like me to just.
We're going to do it just to, just to.
So we would ratify the.
Yeah, well, we'll just make the motion, and he's already done the, the work, but, because you have to get the ads in.
So I make a motion that we hold a public hearing on October 3, 2022, in order to ensure the opt-out process can be completed by the Board of Selectmen by January 1, 2023. And this is for Public Act 21-29, parking standards for residential uses reconsideration.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Second by you? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that one's approved, you know, that's fine. All right, and we have one last one, which is the appointment of George McGregor.
Definitely not.
And Savannah Nicole.
Nope.
This is customary, of course, Laura Markowski's our, our compliance officer, she's very good at it, neither Savannah Nicole, I would like to be involved in that, but customary to also have the other members, the town planner and plan director also included, in case there is any, to step in and enforce something, or is absent.
So you can't enforce something without being, like, appointed?
No.
Really?
No, we're going to get some order of, you know, that it won't have. Yeah, it requires, under, under the charter, a recommendation from the code compliance officer to appoint assistant.
If we found someone had a, a U in their house, you couldn't do anything about it.
I could, I could do, I could do everything except file enforcement, I could write a letter, I could make a call, but.
All right, do we have a motion here?
I will make that motion. I will make that motion, I feel a little lonely over here. All right, I move, let's see, I move for the zoning commission to affirm the recommendation of the duly appointed zoning compliance officer to appoint George K. McGregor and Savannah Nicole Bilalba as assistant zoning compliance officers.
I'll second that.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And how about a motion to adjourn? And that's your chance.